I now call to order the January 30th, 2020 meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:33. At the minute show that the form is present with all members in attendance with Mr. Mixon being absent. Please rise with the invocation to give him his pardon and remain standing pledge allegiance and honor to Texas flag on his purple.
Heavenly Father, Lord God, I thank you so much for the opportunity to work for our children and I just do my best for the people who are here tonight and the people who work so hard to keep our children safe and to keep them secure in their schools. And Lord Jesus, I just ask for wisdom tonight in all the decisions we make and may we be glorified by our time. We give you all the praise and honor, in your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the E.T. Texas, one state, united, indivisible.
Item two on the agenda is recognitions. We're going to start up Mr. Kandarko from Key for Crossing. There he is. How are you doing, sir?
Good, well, how are you, sir? Before we start, I'd just like to say thank you for allowing us to recognize some of our stellar students and staff that are on our campus. They always make our campus shine in bright light and we appreciate them being here and their faces. The first person we'd like to recognize is our teacher, which is Ms. Jessica McBride. Ms. McBride is one of our tech app teachers. She's a blessing to have on our campus. She is very creative in her class and allows her students to do the same. If you were to ever walk in her classroom, you would not want to believe. She has created a classroom that it looks like you're walking to a coffee shop and it's just a great place for us to go and be in there and see our kids. Our kids love being in her class, so Ms. Jessica McBride. Our paraprofessional is Ms. Teresa Trevino. Ms. Trevino is an amazing asset to our campus. She is very dedicated to her job. She goes the extra mile to ensure that our front office area and teachers always have what they need to be successful. She has a kind heart for our parents and our students and is always looking for procedures to put in place for our school to run smoothly. So she basically runs our school. So again, Ms. Teresa Trevino. Our student athlete is Ms. Sidney Kell. Ms. Kell, she's in our girls athletics. During the middle school years, Sidney has been an active participant in volleyball, basketball, track, and cheerleading. Her motivation to continue to improve in those sports have made her an invaluable member of each team. Her fine character and integrity have earned her universal respect from her coaches as well as her peers. Ms. Kell continues to pay much attention to detail as she listens to coaches, teachers, directions, instructions, and demonstrations, which enables her to lead her teams in classmates and friends, by example. Ms. Sidney Kell. Our CTE student is Mr. Kate Thomas. Kate Thomas is a very smart, polite man. He is very involved with the FFA organization and is a great role model for other students. Kate did an outstanding job this year with his animals at the fair, earning grand champion with his pig. In school, Kate maintains good grades he can always be counted on when the next weekend is needed. He's a prime example of an excellent CTE student. Mr. Kate Thomas. Our fine arts student is Mr. Owen Farmer. Owen is a top student, member of three different fine arts departments at KCMS. In choir, he is the tenor section leader and was recently named first chair for tenor two for the UIL Middle School Region Choir. In band, he's an accomplished bassoon player and a good student. He is also a member of the theater department and is a member of both the NCIS Day One Night Play Cast and the UIL One Night Play Cast for UIL. He will also be representing Key for Crossing in eighth grade poetry at the UIL Academy Meet next month. Mr. Farmer was recently awarded Best Performer at the NCISD One Night Play Festival. Mr. Owen Farmer. Our custodian is Ms. Steffi Cook. Ms. Cook is a leader of our custodial team. She's a very hard worker and is always looking for ways to keep our building looking clean and for our staff and students. She shows up to work early mornings with a smile on her face and is always there when called upon. Our school is always clean and ready for the next day. Her leadership with her team is outstanding. She works side by side with each custodian and she is a big part of our KCMS family. Ms. Steffi Cook. Our child nutrition is Ms. Natisha Sanders. Ms. Sanders is a great team player with our team and everyone else within our school. She attends football games and basketball games as well as volleyball games for the students here at KCMS. She has kids that go to New Caney High School and New Caney Middle School, but you can always see her in the crowd at our games. She is always very positive and smiling. She is always there for our students with a positive and uplifting attitude. She is a fun-loving person with a great heart. She loves all the students and it's her priority to make them smile and to give them a positive way to thank you. And I'm not saying this just because she's here, but our students absolutely love her. So Ms. Sanders.
Next, we have Anthony Early College. How are you?
I'm awesome.
Awesome. Do you have a boring day?
No, no. Every day is a great day at Infinity. So, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to stand before you and recognize some of the faces that make Infinity great. We are missing two faces this evening and I would like to verbally recognize them. Jessica Belanos is my paraprofessional. She's also the secretary of life Caesar. She runs the school and her grandmother has passed away. Our cafeteria manager, Nicole Cho, is also not with us this evening, but is new to us this year and has done a fabulous job, so I want to give them verbal recognition. So first, I'd like to introduce this lovely lady right here, lovingly known as Sparkles. Many people know her as Marsha. We know her as Sparkles, Marsha Anderson. Marsha Anderson is our outstanding custodian that we are highlighting. Marsha is a colorful individual, that is reliable, a hard worker, a perfectionist, a consummate dancer at the school dances, and knows how to get down, two girls just want to have fun. And she's a huge dog lover. We couldn't spend a day without Marsha making us laugh and we completely appreciate all that you do, so Marsha, thank you very much for all that you do. And she's supposed to be at work, but she's like, "I can stay off tonight." And I was like, "Yeah, you do." And then her custodian's like, "No, you don't." Okay, anyway, so Marsha Anderson. Okay. The teacher, Ms. Hannah Holahazi, has recently been voted our Teacher of the Year, and deservedly so. She's an innovative educator that understands the importance of making connections and building relationships with staff, students, and community. As our service learning coordinator, Ms. Holahazi is essentially the pulse of this program, providing students with the opportunity to exercise soft skills with a "live to give" attitude. She deserves kudos for the amount of time, effort, and connections and energy that she has put into it, as well as the three other preps that she has assigned on our campus. I can honestly say that she truly believes in the development of the whole student. Ms. Holahazi works closely with our counselor, Ms. Sar, had this to say. Ms. Age is a champion of kids. She is also always thinking outside the box and looking for ways to find resources to help them better themselves in their future. Her passion is contagious and her love for the students and being an educator is a joy to work with. Hannah, we are truly blessed to have you on our campus and I'm happy we're able to still you and we're never, never letting you go. So thank you very much. I simply love recognizing our students. While I appreciate the chance to highlight the adults on our campus, our students deserve accolades for the honors and recognition Infinity has been receiving. I think it goes without saying that I wish I could recognize everyone, but I'm most honored to recognize the three standing to my left. First, I'd like to introduce Senior Isabella Trigio. Isabella will be graduating with her high school diploma and her Associate of Arts in Teaching from Lone Star College in May. She is part of our early room program and will be attending Texas Tech and student teaching for NCISD in the fall and spring of next year. And at the old age of 19, Ms. Trigio will be more than likely teaching at one of our elementary schools in the district. She is following in the path of Martha Santibanez, so you elementary principals better line up because she's going to be equally as good. Isabella is very passionate. Her English professor said she's very passionate and compassionate about people, especially the ones who are marginalized and voiceless. Her writings focus on those who are left behind in society. When she talks about her career as a teacher, she just wants to help those kids get ahead just like the teachers that have helped her. I believe that her perseverance, becoming a teacher, and that she will be a true advocate for the children. Isabella, there is no doubt in our minds that you'll be an amazing leader and teacher in the classroom. Thank you for being a great Infinity night. Isabella. Mary Jane Fesola, M.D. Life Scholar. M.J. is senior and will be attending Lamar University studying Fine Arts with an emphasis on acrylic paints. While Infinity doesn't have a true Fine Arts program, our students are able to be involved through courses offered through Lone Star and also participate in the art club on campus. Mary Jane has successfully worked her way through multiple advanced courses at Lone Star and has created quite the art portfolio, including drawing and ceramics. Ms. Hollier stated that Mary Jane Fesola is one of the most artistic and realistic students she has crossed paths with. She is passionate about art and I think that is where she shines the most. Speaking of shining, Mary Jane has been a shining example of what it means to follow your passion. Infinity is excited to watch this young lady blossom into a modern day Van Gogh and potentially become a teacher of her own where she can share her same passions with her own students. Mary Jane Fesola. Last but not least, when I listened to the other secondary schools highlight their athletes, I was somewhat jealous. As a former coach, I'm competitive and my teachers and everybody tell you I always want to win. And it's not very often that you get to share your accolades about all things great on your team. Well, tonight I'm pumped up. I get to talk about Infinity's outstanding athlete. That's right, folks, we have a cross-country team and I'm not going to lie, they're good. They're more than good, they've won. So to my left is Junior Omar Martinez. I would like to start out by sharing some quotes from his teachers to paint a picture about Omar. Ms. Carnahan stated, are you scared, Omar? Ms. Carnahan stated, "I've seen Omar grow so much. He works hard and doesn't give up. He has come so far in his time here at Infinity and I can't wait to see how far he goes in the future." Mr. Torres said Omar has served as a cross-country co-captain in the fall. He seemed to grow from leadership experience. His academic growth has been amazing and he's definitely embracing his role. Coach Bruin stated Omar has come a long way during his time at Infinity. He has shown tremendous growth academically from his freshman year. In his first year of cross-country, Omar was the epitome of dedication, hard work, and the spirit of competition. Omar displayed the desire to be excellent in athletics and in the classroom. He might have had a slow start in the classroom, but he continued to push to where he needed to be. So what I'm most impressed about is when you come to Infinity, you come to Infinity for books. And we were blessed to have someone that can run. He's not your prototype runner, but he does books now and he's a runner and we were most impressed with him. He placed 10th individually out of 98 and fourth as an overall team. We entered the season as a JV team. We also beat Quarter in New Caney High School, I'm just saying. Omar, we're super proud of you and your academic growth first, but we're equally as proud of you as a leader that you've become on our campus. Sports truly transforms people's lives, so let's do that for him. Thank you, Omar Martinez.
But yeah, like everybody else, I'd like to thank the board, Mr. Framing, for your vibrant come up here and recognize some of our students, I mean, our students, our staff members, our outstanding staff members at the Learning Center. The first person I would like to recognize tonight is Ms. Hosapina Preston. Hosapina is our custodial staff member and is responsible for maintaining the Learning Center at the Child Nutrition Building. She does an excellent job keeping the campus clean, orderly, with properly supplies. She makes herself available to the staff throughout the day to address the building concerns. Next staff member I'd like to recognize is Ms. Maria McCoy. She's our child nutrition staff member and makes the trip from New Caney Elementary to the Learning Center every day with her food card, regardless of the weather outside. She does that at lunch and in the morning, so she serves both breakfast and lunch for our students. And she always has a smile on her face when she enters the building. Maybe not as much of a smile when she leaves, but when she enters the building, she has a big smile on her face. And she makes sure our students' nutritional needs are met, so Maria, thank you very much. Okay, the next staff member is, I'd like to recognize tonight is Mrs. Angela Almoguer. Ms. Almoguer is the principal's secretary at the Learning Center. She also serves as the campus receptionist, the campus bookkeeper, and is responsible for discipline and data entry. She does an outstanding job in all of these areas. In her receptionist role, she greets every student, parent with a friendly smile and a positive attitude and fosters a welcoming front office approach. She truly loves to help people. Finally, last staff member I'd like to recognize tonight is Mrs. Jessica Therapini, our high school of ingenuity teacher. She works closely with our students who are behind in credits at their home campus when they come to us. She has a sincere desire to see every student succeed and enjoys helping students that have fallen behind regroup and move forward in their education. Ms. Therapini has a passion for students and the direction of success. She does it with kindness, encouragement, and enthusiasm. Thank you, Ms. Therapini.
How are you?
I'm good. Good to see you. Looking at practice?
Yes, ma'am.
I get the honor and pleasure tonight of recognizing a group of people who work with some of our students who are mostly Christy in our district and they do it with kindness and compassion and I don't know how we could do it without them. And so we've got a bunch of people that we want to recognize. The first one we're going to recognize is Brenda Corret. She doesn't work exactly in credit recovery, but where they're located, they need help with a lot of the things that Brenda does. She's actually a secretary for one of our, for our whole curriculum department. So not only does she have to deal with all of us, but she is always willing and able to help the teachers in credit recovery when they need things. She helps, she's been in our district for 18 years and for the past two years she's been in our area. And so she does, helps with instructional needs, budget things, all kinds of supplies, and does it with a smile on her face just like she does the rest of our entire department. So Brenda Corret. Our next person is Chris Barnett. He is our head custodian in the annex and Chris has been in our district for 16 years and the last couple of years at Credit Recovery. So he does a lot of different things in that annex and of course in that entire complex over there. We moved Credit Recovery this year and so he moves stuff for us and back and over there and back over there. And how we pay credit to help, he is always willing to come in and help us do that, even when we are just changing our minds a lot. So he always keeps us with a safe and clean environment in our whole area down there and we really appreciate what Chris brings to the table. Our next one is a Student Choice Award. I went up there and asked them, I said, "Okay, so when you go down to the child nutrition area, to the food service area, who is it that you would like to recognize?" And the kids started describing somebody to me and I was like, "Okay." I said, "Do you know her name?" "No, I don't." But if you'll go look at so-and-so, so-and-so, she's the woman that's always smiling to us, always encouraging us, you know, always being very kind to us. And so I had to go figure out who she was. But her name is Sarah Rowe. She's right here. She's been in our food service area in the annex for two years now. And so somebody that is a bonus pick from teachers and students, that's always a good thing to have. So we're happy to have her with us tonight. So I'm getting two teachers tonight. I get bonus teachers. So my first teacher that I'm recognizing tonight is Deidra Harris. Deidra Harris has been in our district for eight years and she's worked in Credit Recovery for the last four years. She's our English trainer's arts teacher. She also provides individual graduation plan when they have to do those projects. She helps the students with those. A lot of the students who come to us are behind on credits or trying to catch up something and either graduate on time or maybe just a little bit late but still graduating, which is what we want them to do. She mothers these kids and loves on them and bosses a little time when they need that, but she makes sure that all of these kids get what they need so that they can be successful and get that diploma that they're all really working hard to get. And so that is Deidra Harris.
The good thing is, is there's two Harrises in our...
She might be related to you.
Yes. She's very different.
Oh, yeah, I have a video of that for sure. So my last one is Mr. Michael Sanson. Michael Sanson has been a lead teacher in our district and 10 of those have been in Credit Recovery. He is our math specialist. So he's a certified math teacher and he can fly from one high school math to the other one with just the flip of a switch. He goes from somebody who's doing geography to somebody who's doing algebra, who's doing Algebra II and calculus, whatever we need. He can just flip from one to the next and it's amazing. Not only is he that, he is also helps our students with those individual graduation plans, helps them prepare for tests, whether it be our VOC tests or any other test they're taking. But he also serves as our lead teacher. We don't have an administrator in that program, they kind of follow the administration from their home campus. And so he serves as the liaison to us, this administration, to the administration on the campuses and to the counselors. He is very, very good with data and helps us know where every kid's at, what we still need to have for them, and how we can support them the best. And we're very fortunate to have him on our team. And that's Michael Sanson.
Mary Corret. All right. Well, good evening. I am honored to speak on behalf of the principals, the staff, students, and community that you represent. Together, we would like to say thank you for your continued commitment to New Caney ISD. We are grateful for the countless hours of service and the many personal sacrifices that you make throughout the year, ensuring that student, campus, and district needs are met each day. As principals, we are strengthened by your support as we serve as instructional leaders on our campuses and for your commitment to ensuring success for all students in New Caney ISD. Tonight, we would like to show appreciation by gifting you with a T-U-R-I-V-A gift card to Top Golf to express our thanks for the drive you put into all that you do and to say thank you for supporting us throughout the year. Thank you all very much.
Item three on the agenda is High School Number Three, up eight. Ms. Laura, please stand up. How are you?
It's a pleasure to be here. I'm here with the fellow who is also working on this project. So last time I came to present to you guys High School Number Three, we showed you the floor plan, inside development, and a little bit of the exterior. Today, we're going to show you a little bit more on the exterior and give you a little bit of inside the building as well. So just a reminder, this is a look at the site plan. We've got Sorders McClellan off to the left of the screen and that's really the front of the building, the way that we're facing. of the building, the way that we're facing. We can see that parking is located to the north and south. The athletes are seated behind the building, and of course, we've left room for future growth for the base of this project in the future. Just a quick recap of the floor plans that you guys have seen before. In the upper right corner, you see the entry, which is the administration area. The yellow is the library. And as you move around, it's all centered around this central courtyard, which you'll see when we took the flyer on the building. The green is where your dining and kitchen area is. Of course, your fine arts is the purple. And the kind of teal color that you see both at the front and in the back corner is your CTE program. So one of the things we talked about is really celebrating CTE programs, generating interest with the entire student body. And then the orange that you see there is the competition gym and associated locker rooms. You go to the second floor, again, you'll start to see the classroom grouping, so that's those blue areas. And then sprinkled without, throughout, again, there's CTE up at the front. You've got your auxiliary gym at the bottom of the page, which is upstairs. And then of course, you can see the purple over there is, is the second floor of the, not really the second floor, but the higher volume. And then again, on the third floor, you see a lot of the same. The difference up here is this is for all the science labs, so all the science labs are together. And then this is a picture of the field house. Of course, you've got your locker rooms, weight rooms, and then we have restrooms, if you'll remember, on the field house that are supporting the athletic home, that's his house behind the school. So now we're going to do a video to kind of give you a better look at what the school looks like. And it's about three and a half minutes, so we'll see if I can talk that long. So this is the view as you're approaching, this is from Sorders. So again, this is the front entry of the building. This is what you see as you're going by. You can see that the building opens up at where the front entry piece is. As a reminder, this building is till wall construction. That is a very cost-effective, cost-effective system for this building, and it's also willing to help with construction scheduling as well. As we move around, you can see the student parking. You can also see those open green areas. We designed the parking, the whole site, to accommodate those future additions to the building, so that we're not going to have to rip out parking when we go to those additions. As you come around the back, now you start to see the athletic areas. You'll start to see that we grouped those together, so between baseball and softball, it creates a little bit of a plaza, so you can have shared amenities there. You can see the football area, and behind that is the field house, which will start to come around, and you can get a look at what the field house looks like. Practice football fields, and then of course, your tennis courts. And then the parking you see to the left is the staff parking. And again, as you come in, any of those green areas, that's where we're, we have left room for future growth. This is a good look at the field house. So from the back of the high school, as you walk towards the field house, you can see the entry there. And then as you turn around, you start to see this is the bus drop-off area. And the back entry where a lot of the students that are being dropped off by the buses will come in through that back canopy. And now we'll kind of come over and start to look down into the courtyard, which again is the center of the entire design. It does a couple of things. One, it gives that visual connection to the outdoors. It also enabled us to get daylighting in all of the classrooms. If your, if your building is all too compact, and you have a lot of classrooms that don't have any natural light at all. So the classrooms in this building have, all have natural lights. You can see here, it's a combination of concrete. In terms, we've got some shade structures, some shade that's created by the spaces above as well. So as a reminder, the library looks out onto this base. To the left is the cafeteria, the dining commons. And then you've got the CTE that also goes out this way as well. So lots of opportunity for gathering, outdoor eating with cafeteria. You could also bring classes out here to do some outdoor learning in this space as well. Because it's a courtyard, it's completely secured, so anything that happens in this is still a part of the secure building. And as we go back out towards the front, we'll come back down with the front entry, so you can get a better look at that front entry. And that is the exterior of the conference of high school number three. And now, Pearl will show you some of the inside of the building.
So like we went through the outside, like the idea was to begin maximum daylight to have the opportunity for, to every classroom, to have the visual connection outside. The idea for interiors is also to have the same kind of feel, to bring the colors, the nature inside, to have connectivity. So once you enter the school and you are checked in at the reception desk, this is kind of the space you would enter into. This is the main lobby. And like we had mentioned at the last meeting, the idea is to have colors in the furniture, in some wall art graphics, while everything else is neutral, so that allows you all to, whenever you pick a school color, to kind of blend in, and it's not contrasting with what we have picked in the interiors. And this is kind of the main lobby, and you enter one side, you are connected, visual connection to the library. And on the other end, we're looking through is the CTE, the health programs, the pharmacy programs, so you have that connection, CTE and the curriculum on one side. You see that all happening from the main lobby. This is a view of the dining area, the clean from, once you enter from the bus drop-off, once you enter the dining, and you're looking through towards the serving lines on the right side, and you look at the learning stair. It's kind of a multi-purpose space where you can use the learning stair for, we're having like a projector and a screen, so that you can have a small meeting, a group discussion as well at the learning stair. And then you can have direct connection and visual connection to the courtyard if somebody wanted to go out and sit and eat, and have a visual connection between the two floors as well, up and down. Very simple, this is like, this is the competition gym. Right now, the colors are, this will be obviously more colorful based on the school colors. This is like placeholder right now. Seating both sides and visual connection to the main lobby on one side, and then the, the practice fields on the back side. A view of the weight room in the field house. On the left side is the field house, and you can see through the doors, you can walk out, and it would take you to the gymnasium and the main high school. So it's like a visual connection, the weight room's all open. On the other end of the weight room, you are, you open out to the practice fields. This is the auditorium lobby, kind of carrying the same language as you entered the school. So these are the main, the common spots throughout the school, kind of tie the whole building and the spaces together. Same kind of language, same kind of opening and feel, like neutral top colors and neutral floor tile colors, and highlighting the green and outdoors, getting the focus to the outdoors and, and the lighting. A view of the auditorium, this is a 600-seat auditorium, all on one level, no balcony. And kind of just showing how we kind of put highlighting the stage and the proscenium, but everything kind of, anything else fades away. And I think we had shared this with you all last year, it's kind of a classroom space, curriculum space. This is on the second and third floor, and kind of each classroom, you can see, they'll have connection daylight to the courtyard or to the outside on both sides, as it turns the loop on the second and third floor.
Thank you, great job. Item four on the agenda is open forum. If nobody signed up for that. Item five on the agenda is closed meeting. Board will now meet in closed meeting under authority of the Texas Governor Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Governor Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Governor Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding purchase, exchange, or lease or value of real property. Any action as a result of closed meeting discussion will take place when the board reconvenes an open meeting. Current time is 7:13. The board ends closed meeting at 9:43 PM and will now reconvene in open session. Item six on the agenda, superintendent's report.
We'll start off with Ms. Chalkner.
Good evening. I'm happy that we get a few minutes to share with you some amazing things that are going on in our construction department. One of the dates that we had earlier than that, January 13th, was our first ever district showcase in New Caney High School. And really the purpose behind that was to have a place to spotlight all of the amazing opportunities our kids have up in the district that sometimes parents and community members don't get to see. If you're not involved in bands, sometimes you don't get to see all of, all that goes on behind the scenes. And so, we actually had kids there showcasing what they do. And so, almost every area, there was something, an experience that the kids were having with whoever was there. And so, it was a really great night, it was our first one, and so we'll be looking for that next January for us to have another one. We did it that time just because our kids are having course selection about that time, and so it gives them a way to see everything that they can choose. Secondly, pretty exciting, we have a program in our district called Elevation. It's an online software that really combines instructional strategies and EL data. It gives teachers a place that they would go when, when they need to teach something that maybe the kids might struggle with, and it gives them different strategies to pull to teach. And so, right now, this product is in 48 states, and, like, over 900 districts? Over 900 districts. And in the first week of December, Elevation was in our district, videoing lessons with our teachers and our students. They've been super impressed with our district. And so, as of yesterday, those videos were posted in their platform. So if I'm a teacher in, I don't know, Alaska, and I want to teach a certain strategy, when I click on that, I'll actually see teachers in New Caney ISD teaching those strategies. So it's a pretty big deal. So we have a little video to show, it's very short, it's a minute and something, and maybe four, five minutes.
This is going all across the nation as well as...
All, 48 states. And actually, when was it pushed out? Last night, they pushed out eight of the strategies, still have two left as they're editing. But, I mean, all across the state, we will see our New Caney ISD teachers that are already teaching right now.
So this is actually one of the videos to...
This is a highlight reel that they created, they compiled all the strategies together. Yeah. We're super proud of our teachers and students. Those videos were recorded at Porter High School and Woodbridge Forest, so we really appreciate those principals and teachers. And I was going to get this to share in my experience.
Are you sharing with me?
Also, I'm going to brag a little bit on Dr. Rios. We have had, especially in the last year, districts from all over the state that have contacted her and want to come to our district to talk to our teachers, talk to Dr. Rios about our dual language program. So today, she was at Sidletz's conference, and she presented, and John Sidletz is a pretty big deal in the dual language world, and she'll be on this podcast soon. So he sat in her session today, so New Caney ISD is on the map. And the last thing that I'll share, last year, Rory Monroe, who is our director, guidance, and advanced academics, counseling, is advanced academics. Last year, she came to you with some data from Panorama about social emotional learning and where our kids were, remember looking back. And so, we told you that we were going to put some things in place to really support and help our kids. And so, the second page that you have has a lot of the things that have been put in place. There's been some groups, some guidance counseling. We also came together as a district leadership team with some of our principals and counselors, and we chose seven mindsets as our social emotional learning program. And so this summer, some of our principals and Dr. Royland and a few of us went to a seven mindsets conference, and so that's been implemented on, you'll have to help me, five of our campuses, Tabola, Kings Manor, Hoover Crossing, Woodbridge Forest, and Infinity. So they've fully implemented with kids, with teachers. And then we have some campuses who just implemented it with their teachers. So they talk about the seven mindsets with their teachers, because it really does make a huge difference with, with adults. And so, we have some campuses that will be coming on board next year, campuses that implemented with just that will be adding students next year. And she also mentioned to you that we received a couple of grants last year, you might help me be more specific. But as of today, as of this week, we have two crisis counselors in the district. One of them started this week, and those were both funded. I know, that's exciting. So that was funded out of those grants. We also had networking event where we had districts from across the area that came to our district to hear what we were doing, social emotional learning, some conferences.
Yeah, yeah. So 22 districts came to the event that we hosted in November. So what New Caney ISD is doing in the realm of social emotional learning is kind of being out there. And so, we have districts that are approaching us to look at the implementation plan and how that's working. In January, Region Four featured New Caney ISD as a spotlight district for the work that we're doing with the SEM. And so, we had our principals from the five pilot campuses were able to go and were a panel to field questions and talk about the implementation of SEM. We also have some of our data being submitted to Castle, the Castle Organization, which is the national organization collaborative for academic and social emotional learning, because we have shown a statistic significance in improving discipline with the implementation of social emotional learning, so it's very exciting. This summer, Ms. Chalkner mentioned that last summer, some of us went to a seven mindsets institute to get training for implementation. This summer, we are planning to host our own leadership institute in the district, and so we're really excited about that as well. Do you have any questions, friends?
Yes, so on page two, emotional regulations, when I'm looking at that, can you go over with me what I'm looking at in emotional regulations under elementary versus secondary? What is that data? We don't need to go through all of it, can you break those two down for me so I can understand line one?
Yes.
What am I looking at, data one?
So, so the surveys were created by my Panorama, and I think last year, I gave you the sort of psychometrics of those and provided you with the questions on that. So emotional regulation is, there, it would be a set of questions that students would answer, the different set for elementary than for secondary, and their response to those questions would indicate their level of... And their response to those questions would indicate their level of emotional regulation, the amount of control that they have when they're responding to different circumstances or different events.
So the two tells me what? Two percent lower, two percent higher? I mean, what does the data tell me?
Oh, sorry, there was a plus-two percent improvement. So if you see that, that is correct. In that particular area, we have seen grow at the elementary level. Yes, all right, perfect, correct.
Did you see the last one there, from the secondary, shows a place we need to work on?
That is a place we need to work on, absolutely, yes. And you're seeing, so this is district average. We also have this information disaggregated by campus, so.
So can you just, we see what's next. Can you just hit the hot points of that, what's coming?
Sure.
How they're expanding it?
Yes, absolutely. So the six campuses that are working just with their staff, professional development, again, we know that if we build capacity in the adults, we're seeing great instruction and great modeling skills that we're wanting our students to acquire. So we knew that that was an area we needed to work on. Those six campuses that are working just with their staff will be bringing the full student curriculum in the fall. And then we'll be hoping to add additional campuses with that staff implementation piece as well, with a goal to have it district-wide, so we're speaking a common language and developing those skills in our students to do it.
And by doing it this way, we're going to see the actual results in a timely manner, and see the improvement from the initial training across the board.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think it's a solid implementation plan.
I also want you to tell them a little bit about what the grant, those that you've spoken to that have checked in on the grant and seven mindsets, what they've said about our teaching.
Right. So grant money is really awesome, because it helps us do things. And then there's the accountability side of it, that's a lot of work, and speaking to the organizations that are giving money. So that was the Menager organization, and then also Mental Health America. So they asked a lot of questions, and they want data to support where their dollars are being spent. So they've had really positive things to say about, our principals have participated a lot in those meetings, that's an expectation. And so, they've done just a great job representing their campuses, representing the district, and there's just a really great perception of what we're doing out there, not just in other school districts, but we're talking about mental health, behavioral health in the community at large, so.
And when we talk about safety, and school safety and those initiatives, we really believe that mental health is one of the number-one ways that we can affect positive student behavior and meet our goals of a safe and orderly environment. So that's why we're doing this, is to provide you a visual way to see where we are from a mental health standpoint, and use that as a real stepping stone, not only with how we secure our values, but also making sure our students are safe and secure through this work. This is what this is all about.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Perfect.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item 7 on the agenda is reports and proposals from board members.
I just wanted to comment, I know it's been a really stressful week, and we had a lot of scary situations. And I appreciate the quick response and the information that we got. And it was really a testament, I think, to the training that we do, and that we're able to keep all the kids safe.
That's a wonderful job, because we know that you guys have a lot to take care of every single day. Well, none of us can relate to that, because we're not responsible for 800, to however many thousand kids some of you guys are responsible for. So we appreciate that, because every day when you guys get to work, you never know what you're going into. So we appreciate you guys getting up every day and fighting the battle for us out there. And we want to let you know that we appreciate that.
Item 8 on the agenda is consideration, consent counter, consideration of minutes, consideration of financial report, consideration of purchasing report, and consideration of personnel reports. Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the item with consent counter? Motion has been moved consecutive, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Motion is approved. Item 9 on the agenda is consideration of middle school zones 2020, 2021, presented by Mr. Cowherd.
Yes, sir. This is a recommendation from the proposal we brought to you all in December. So just a little history on that, since the last time we talked. We've provided parents and community members a way to reach out to us for their comments and concerns. One of those ways was contacting Deanie Murray directly. So we had five people take advantage of that via email, and two people called her, just voiced their concerns about the rezoning. We had 11 submit feedback. We are an online platform, and we kept that in a Google sheet. Honestly, it's about 60/40. 60% of those having more concerns, and the 40% that said, hey, this is a great idea, y'all go for it. The majority of those concerns was going down North Park Drive. And we all know the headache that that could be, especially given the time that they decided to do it. That was also echoed in the community meeting we had at Woodbridge Forest on January 14th. Again, not necessarily related specifically to the rezoning, but, you know, North Park Drive in general, what happens when or if construction ever starts on North Park Drive, what is the plans of that? So, and I think we can all appreciate those concerns regarding that very, very, very day. At that meeting, we talked specifically about what we're doing with the seventh graders. And just again, what we told them is they have two options. They can stay at Wado Middle School, and then they can go to Porter High School. Or they can go to Woodbridge Forest Middle School, and they can go to our new high school.
Six graders, Ms. Cowherd? Sorry, six graders.
Six graders. So the seventh graders have a choice?
That will be seventh graders next year. Right, I mean, next year, it's not this year, seventh graders.
No, you're good. I'm glad you keep it straight. That's a fun job. So what we told that group is we just said, okay, you know, once the board approves it, then we'll open up the transfer portal, so they can submit the student transfer form, like any other process in the district. And they need to have that in by February 14th. So that way, we can start working on staff duty, we can start working on course selection sheets, we can start doing all that stuff. If they turn it in, decide to go to Wado, that's fine. If they don't turn it in, then they're automatically going to roll to Woodbridge Forest. So I thought it was a, you know, open process, very transparent process, had a lot of feedback, a lot of concerns were shared, but nothing that would change the recommendation that we're bringing together. Any questions?
I appreciate the way it was handled, with the online submission and the responsiveness of community meetings and so on. So thank y'all.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the middle school zones 2020, 2021? Motion has been moved consecutive, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
I don't have any.
Opposed, it's no, the motion is approved. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of CPR 01-A in the amount of $105,002 in the address required modification for New Caney Mud Bond 2018, Keeper Crossing, Middle School replacement, project number 042-2018, presented by Mr. Cowherd.
Yes, sir. This is the change order for that project, and two things that much require us to modify, that's water line access, and sanitary sewer force maintenance, as well as some fire lines, where things coming in that's safe, and some of the DC box, and adjusting fire hydrants, make those do ones.
Perfect. Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the CPR 01-A in the amount of $105,002 to address required modification for New Caney Middle School Mud Bond 2018, Keeper Crossing, Middle School replacement, project number 042, that's 2018?
Say it again?
So a motion has been moved consecutive, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's no, the motion is approved. There being no further business?
We want to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I wanted to first recognize the committee that took three days out of their busy week last week to serve on our committee that worked on the selection of New Caney High School football coach and coordinator. Mr. Cowherd, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Holton, thank you. Coach Trish Mize and Mr. Seif put together a great committee, and we're very proud that that committee recommended Coach Travis Reed. Coach Reed, welcome. And we'd also like to welcome your wife, Destiny. And later to get home, we're so glad you're going to be an Eagle. Glad to have you here with us. If y'all would stand, we'd love to give you a round of applause. And we're not going to do like the Baptist church and ask those to oppose or. We're in good shape. Welcome to New Caney. We're so excited to have you.
Yes, sir, we are. We are, the board are excited to see you coming. But there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 10:02.